There are days.
Well, John.
Spinoff.
I'm fighting something.
Oh, really?
Yes, and I'm supposed to go to Florida this weekend to see my new granddaughter. My other daughter's going to college. Okay, Terry, the best one looking post party that she has to be here. I'm like, I have to get over this.
Yeah.
You'll follow your mom.
Huh? Yeah, whenever you're last, that was the last time. No. Why is it game recording?
Who's the first man? What question?
You go cold, Anthony.
So we're doing it right. Do you come to us?
I can't agree.
It was veteran, right?
Yeah.
Well, they do all the engineering, I didn't know.
Yes, there were some credit via credit. Brings on my use of the bill. So they're only charging us.
So the drainage board, Dan, don't put it in a drainage.
They were using that direction. It would be nice. The only issue is that it requires. Hey, this to expire instead of construction. I don't, I didn't know this is a tax contract there.
Right now, it's free for all.
So here's my thing, take your additional man, it was gonna be something. Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and I don't think you care.
Okay, that's what they understand.
Because they said they want to start working.
But if we had teeth, someone.
So I already started this out.
Files that. Let's just start.
I don't think it's too small.
Yeah, that's fine.
They originally said they wanted to start.
Well, that's where they needed the permit. That's hard.
Yeah. You don't get paid. It's horrible thing. You're gonna start being built in a shelter or something.
Yeah. That's a problem.
Yeah. That work we're doing now. Yeah, that's far.
You're used to it.
It's far, so what do you do? Yeah.
It's one of those years.
It's a year, it's a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
Wait, that when?
No. Let me give you the number of the guy that called, who lives in Dallas. That one lady that has a cat.
Black comedy patio, and we don't shoot a miss, but.
Yeah. It could suck before. It was one of the cool. My. The worst place, there was a big down maybe two. I think on a PTO, that is a pretty bad third. And then there's a second.
That's how it moved.
So it was in January.
Yeah, I think the second.
Bring it back.
It was like fifteen years ago. Yeah, I didn't know that. Yeah, I don't think you need to pay it. It was like, it was literally. What you need?
Uh, I'm not sure, I don't, I'm not sure I need it. This thing.
Here.
Terry, you need this?
Uh, yeah.
I've got that.
What you need?
I need the. You got to do this, okay, I'm good. That's fine?
Yeah.
Good afternoon, everyone, we're gonna call the Warwick County Commissioners Meeting to Order. Today is January ninth, twenty twenty-three. Sheriff, anybody in the place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business is area plan.
We have one request to rezone. PCR twenty-two eleven, petitioner owner Spring Hagston LLC by John Alfreds, manager. They're requesting rezone one point zero four four acres located on the south side of Van Road, two hundred and eighty feet east of the intersection of Van and Bell Road, from R one, one family dwelling zoning district to an R one PUD, one family dwelling planned unit development. Being part of lot two in Martin Bell subdivision, it's recorded in document two thousand thirteen R zero zero two six two nine in the Warwick County Recorders Office. This was advertised in the standard November twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, and the area plan commission gave a unanimous positive recommendation at their meeting held on December twelfth of twenty twenty-two.
Safe to assume, go ahead, Scott.
Scott Beadle with Cash Wagner and Associates. Uh, here for the final rezoning vote tonight. We do have, like Molly said, uh, subdivision approval, and we'd been before you a couple of times, well, I guess once for drainage board, and then once for the vacation of a portion of the right of way that extends into the property. Uh, so all that has taken place, and we're hoping to get a positive vote tonight to create these three lots and get three more houses up there.
Just in, I assume this will be twenty twenty-three dash one?
Yes, first ordinance of the year.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the request to rezone on December twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three dash one.
Second? I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Molly. Next order of business is the, uh, action agenda. Item A is the approval of minutes of both the December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two meeting and the January second, twenty twenty-three meeting.
We have to do these separately or can we do them both together?
I would do them separately, sorry.
I make a motion to approve the December twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two, twelve P M regular session minutes.
I'll second.
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Make a motion to approve January second, twenty twenty-three, eleven forty-five regular session.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Next order of business is the, uh, lane township appointments. Heather, you care to explain that one?
So, um, with the vac- vacating of that position, um, by the lane township trustee, William Jenkins was appointed last year. Um, and then Trina Jenkins was appointed as a board member to fill those two open seats, being that it was not during an election, those need reappointments need done for twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve both the land, lane township trustee, William Jenkins, lane township board member, Trina Jenkins.
Counsel, that good with one motion?
That's one.
Okay.
You know, I'll second that.
Uh, first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Okay. Yes. Counsel, I believe, question from Commissioner Johnson, was we can do these via group?
Correct, yes.
So, item C is our twenty twenty-three appointments. First set of appointments will be for commissioner officers. I'll entertain any motions for the, uh, board president.
I make a motion to approve Terry Philippi as president of the board.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
And I just, I just screwed up the plan here.
No, for this one, I'll do it that way, actually.
This one, yeah.
Okay, and then, uh, the next one is for, uh, vice president of the Board of Commissioners.
I make a motion for Bob Johnson.
And I will second that, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Next, uh, next set is for the county attorney, former individual.
Make a motion to approve Fine and Hatfield as our county attorneys.
Second?
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Next, uh, set is the commissioner's office staff administrator and assistant administrator slash H R manager.
So you got, do you read the names?
Uh.
Someone make a nomination as to those two positions.
Okay. I nominate Heather Solberg and Shatika Baird.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Um, can we do all of the drainage boards as is? We're gonna maintain those positions, so, um, next set is the Gibson Joint Drainage Board, next one is the Spencer Joint Drainage Board, the next one is the Gibson Vanderburg Warwick Joint Drainage Board. Um, so I think we can do all those at the same time. Existing members on Gibson are Bob Johnson, Terry Philippi, Spencer, Dan Saylor, Bob Johnson. Joint Drainage Board Gibson Vanderburg and Warwick is Terry Philippi and Steve Sherwood. I'll entertain a motion on that.
Make a motion to approve those members.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Excuse me. Next order is Veterans Affairs.
Make a motion to approve Jed Campbell as veterans officer.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Next, uh, set is I T Department, C Chief Information and Security Officer.
Make a motion to approve Guy Whelan.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Next set is the Highway Department Superintendent Foreman, District One, Two, and Three.
Make a motion to keep the superintendent foreman for one, two, and three the same as last year.
And I'll second that.
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Next set is the Engineering Department Engineer and Assistant Engineer.
Make a motion to approve as these are the same as last year.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Next one is the Building Department Building Inspector and Office Administrator.
Make a motion to approve the Building Inspector Dennis Lockhart and Office Administrator Angie Lutes.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye, aye.
My motion carries three zero. Uh, next set is the Economic Development Director.
Make a motion to approve Steve Rowley.
Second? There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Second page. Next set is, uh, oh, there's a, there's another one, let's see. So this is the Economic Development Commission.
Make a motion to approve Steve Rowley.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Next department is the Emergency Management Agency Director and Secretary.
Make a. Go ahead, Dan.
Make a motion to approve Jake Greer as director and Beth Williams as secretary.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Uh, our local emergency planning committee appointee.
Make a motion to approve Terry Philippi.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Uh, Southern Indiana Rural Development Project.
Make a motion to approve Bob Johnson.
I'll second that, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Uh, appointee to our Title Six N A D A Coordinator positions, a coordinator and a second contact position.
Make a motion to approve Shatika Baird and Heather Solberg.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Uh, State OSHA Representative and second contact.
Make a motion to approve Heather Solberg and Shatika Baird.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Uh, our Drug and Alcohol Testing Coordinator and second contact.
Make a motion to approve Heather Solberg and Shatika Baird.
I feel like I have a hearing need. Second?
I hear it too.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Uh, our Ways and Measures Inspector.
I make a motion to approve Mike Arnold.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. And our appointee to the Alcohol Beverage Board.
Make a motion to pre- approve Gene Wyche.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. And our appointee to the B Z A.
Make a motion to approve Mike Wingy.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Our, uh, one, two, three, four, five appointees to the Economic Development Advisory Council.
Make a motion to approve Jerry Agner, Randall Pemberton, Brandon Hayes, Randall Miller, Tony Ellsworth.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. To our Evansville Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Make a motion to approve Dan Saylor.
I'll second that, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Uh, to the Evansville Regional Economic Partnership.
Make a motion to approve Dan Saylor.
I'll second that, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Page three. Uh, to our Health Board, we have one, two, three, four appointees, and I can tell you guys that I haven't had.
Mr. President, I'd like to table that if you don't mind till our next meeting.
Make a motion to table.
Second?
All in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Um, is this a duplicate L A P C? I hope Gary did that.
Yeah.
That's a duplicate.
Okay.
Uh, our appointee to the Pigeon Township Sewer District.
Make a motion to approve Mike Raisler.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Our appointees to the Property Tax Assessment Board, there are three.
Make a motion to approve Bo Dial.
No, John.
It's John.
It's Joe.
Sorry. John Goth, Madeline O'Neil, and Angela Wilder.
I'll second.
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye. Aye.
My motion carries three zero. And to the Redevelopment Commission, four members.
Make a motion to approve Randall Miller, Randall Pemberton, Brandon Hayes, and Tony Ellsworth.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Um, our appointee, this is, uh, somebody that was voted in as a replacement in twenty-two, so we're just confirming her twenty-three appointment, I believe, Solid Waste Management District.
Make a motion to approve Tracy Matthews.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. And to Southwest Indiana Regional Development Authority.
Make a motion to approve Dan Saylor and Randall Miller.
I'll second that motion, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Uh, to the Tourism Commission.
I'd like to table until our next meeting, please.
Is that a motion?
Second?
Yeah.
I have a motion to table, and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Um, to the Weed Control Board, we have one appointee.
Make a motion to approve Jack Berkeley.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Caught. Okay, next order of business is our County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first, I have the consent agenda, and that includes the county auditor claims voucher reports from twelve twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two through one ten, twenty twenty-three, herald date of one three, twenty twenty-three. Next is the Purdue University twenty twenty-three Extension Services Agreement. Um, next is the W T H Web Access Proposal. Then I have the True Scribs twenty twenty-three Prescription Drug Program, the acceptance of the Warwick Animal Guardians donation of building at animal control location, our twenty twenty-three insurance renewals, and the Sheriff's Department Keller Schrader software renewals, and also their Bright software renewals.
Got one more.
Yeah, well, the sure, yeah, that's, that's the Bright software, isn't it, aye?
You got one more.
That's not on the consent agenda, sir.
Yeah, I think this is just consent stuff.
Sorry.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you. Next, uh, we have a declaration of a surplus weapon for the Sheriff's Department for a retiring member of the force.
Sheriff Mike Wilder. Uh, it's common practice, obviously, if a deputy retires with eight years of service, they've always been given their service weapon. Uh, you might, if you read that, you might get a little confused because it's Scott Whitlow. He actually retired a while back, but he stayed on as a reserve deputy and, uh, maintained his weapons that way, so now he, uh, just, I appointed him recently as a special deputy, he's a civilian at the courthouse, so he's no longer a reserve deputy. So now we want to surplus that gun and go ahead and get him his weapon.
Make a motion to approve. I'll second that.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Okay, and the last thing I have is the Second Amendment to the Agreement for Road Usage. Um, the Peabody Coal Mine Crossing at Wasson Road, they wanted to relocate that.
Five hundred feet to the north or south?
Yes. Fourteen hundred feet.
Fourteen hundred feet.
Uh huh.
So it's moving, moving the crossing?
That's it? That's it?
Got it. Counsel, anything? Seems pretty simple.
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
All right, that's all, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, next order of business is our County Attorney.
Uh, I wanted to add two things under my items, Mr. President, first being a review and approval of amended employee handbook policy, specifically regarding vehicles and equipment, as well as, uh, pay time off fees of absence, these have been circulated for your review, and all this needs is a motion to approve.
Both at one time?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye. Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
And the other is a, um, underwriter engagement, um, that's been provided, um, with respect to prospective jail project. This is a, a contract that would not obligate the county in any way. That's kind of the whole point of it, is it a pre-engagement? But they need to submit it for, um.
Compliance?
Compliance, federal compliance, and it's, it's a action of the county, so we should approve it. Open meeting.
Got it.
I, I make a motion to approve the engagement letter.
I'll second.
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
And that's all I have?
Thank you, sir. Next order of business is our County Engineer and Highway Superintendent.
Thank you. The first item I have is the District One Highway Foreman December Pay App for Dan Co. And that amount has been reviewed by the architect, and that amount is eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and twelve cents.
Bobby, what does that leave us in retention?
We still have ninety, ninety, almost ninety-two thousand, I believe.
What, what pay app number is this, Bobby? This is like, three or four, does it say?
No, it just says the symbol, the name, pay app number. No, this is ten.
This is ten?
Yeah.
Doesn't seem like we've done that many.
No, I didn't, I didn't read that many either.
Eighty-eight, two forty-five, twelve, ninety-two in retention.
Balance to finish after this is eighty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars on top of the retention.
So not only do we have the retention, we have another eighty-four thousand, right?
Correct.
What, what are you, did? I know I've been in some of those meetings, but I've not really heard a date of completion, substantial completion date. What?
Well, as far as the building itself goes, I know the generator won't be in until mid-February. Um, other than that, gas is going in now. And once that is in, then the heat can be energized from the water line, gets energized, so that, uh, last is sewer, and the sewer line is being installed. Uh, the main extension is being installed by Huber now in his development, and then the lateral will extend into his development.
Perfect. Good deal.
So there's a period of time that the line has to be air tested. I think after thirty days after it's installed, maybe. Uh, but then Huber will let us hook up before the manual testing has to be done. So they'll, they're, they're trying what they can do to get us in quick.
Air test on the sewer line, is that pressure line?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So they do, they'll do some.
Sure.
Bobby, how are they coming on the hit list items?
I have not seen the, the, uh, summary of those, but they have been addressing them, and that item has also been getting a little longer. There's a couple of broken windows and garage doors that they have to replace, and they may have done that this week already, I'm not sure.
I know, Bob, they, they worked, you know, uh, they've worked on some, but the punch list is not complete by any means, because they weren't, they weren't at what they call san- substantial completion yet, and you had the holidays and stuff, so I'd say they'll be working on that pretty, pretty hard now.
And they're bouncing back and forth between those.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so did we, uh, make a motion on that?
I did. Wait for Dan.
Oh, uh, yes, you guys good?
Yep.
I just, I can't get over, we've approved ten, there's ten pay apps, but maybe we have. Uh, I make a motion to approve payout number ten for Dan Co. for eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars and twelve cents.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you. The next item I have is the contract for the gas service extension with Fairpoint Energy. The total to run the, extend some gas main and run the two-inch service line to that same building, it was twenty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents. There's advanced credit, um, on the building of twenty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. So our total is three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. This is a contract for the extension, I've asked Vegas to review, and I believe it's in order for signature.
Right. Make a motion to approve.
Second?
There are first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
And I have one more item, uh, that just got brought up today. Indot is having their bridge preventative maintenance funding application. Uh, it is due by the end of this month. I'm in the process of working on that application for Warwick County Bridges thirty-seven and two ninety-one, both of which are inspection, says that they could use a, uh, bridge deck overlay. So that is what I'm going to apply for, for funding this preventative maintenance funding mechanism. This is the first year Indot has done this. So I would like to enter into a, an agreement for federal aid application assistance with Lot Mueller Group, who most recently just completed one of these for community crossings. Basically, it's five hundred dollars each bridge, or a lump sum fee of one thousand dollars. And they can get me the cost estimates, permitting estimates, environmental estimates that need to be done in time for me to get this project applied for.
And Bobby, you say that funding, the federal versus local, is, is it eighty-twenty or, or ninety-two?
I'd have to look, I know it's at least eighty.
At least eight, eighty-twenty. Okay.
Regardless, it needs to be done, so.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the, uh, Indot Bridge Funding Request for Bridge Number Thirty-seven and Two Ninety-seven.
Two ninety-nine one. Two ninety-one.
Or Two Ninety-one.
And I'll second.
This is, yeah, and the approval with Lot Mueller Group to assist with the application.
And with, as stated, aye, Bobby. Put that in my motion.
Good, that's our second. So I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Is that all, Bobby?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, what's next? Next order of business is, uh, Grants Department.
Sherry Severs, Warwick County Acquisition Administrator, filling in for, uh, Grants Development Director Debbie Bennett Steersman. And then I only have one item on the agenda this evening. I'm asking for approval for the ARPA Competitive Grant Agreement for the Town of Tennyson. Uh, the commissioners approved the ARPA project on October tenth, twenty twenty-two to improve Tennyson Community Center and Town Hall. The upgrades consist of cabinets, ceiling tile, drywall repair, paint, two new evens in the community center, and new flooring in Tennyson Town Hall. This is, replaces the original materials from construction in Town Hall forty-five years ago in nineteen seventy-eight. Total project cost is thirty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars with a match of three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars in ARPA funds in the amount of thirty thousand. Again, I'm just asking for approval of the ARPA contra- uh, Competitive Grant Agreement for the Town of Tennyson.
Make a motion to approve the grant for Tennyson.
Second?
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business is, uh, items for discussion, I believe, Tony O'Neil from, is Tony here? No? Okay. We will do that another time. Anyone else have any business for the board?
I have nothing.
I'll do. Make a motion to adjourn, second?
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
What?
It was on, it's usually only identified, so we keep contacting her. I just moved it, I just were discussion because it wasn't an action.
I wonder if that was, uh, left over from last year's.
Yes. See, that's why I think that she doesn't like that. Okay. Top name here is that bear fighter.